I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting, council meeting on Monday, October 7th, 2013. And would you please stand and join Vice Mayor Pizzillo in the pledge allegiance and the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, I ask that you provide wisdom to all on this dais, that as we go about making decisions on behalf of our citizens, that our decisions are sound and positively impact the community as a whole. I also ask that you provide safe harbor for all of our men and women in uniform, as they go about service the public and our nation, and provide a safe ride home for all in attendance. In thy name, amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Pizzillo. All right, tonight, before we do roll call, just to let you know, we have one councilman missing, so we're going to need a motion and a second to excuse Councilwoman Campbell. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Stiff and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the six zero.
All right, we're going to change the procedure a little bit tonight. We're going to move the citizen comment up. So I'm going to start with that. And we have one, before I do it, let other people in the audience know, it is time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agend item. I do have a speaker card, so along with that, is there anybody from the audience that wanted to speak? All right, well then we'll proceed. I'm going to announce that the first speaker and the only speaker tonight is Reginald M. Ballantyne. Comments of appreciation, Senior Corporate Officer from Vanguard Health Systems. And as you, when you come up, sir, if you'll please give me your name and address, and I do need to tell you that there is a time limit on this, so you do have three minutes and the box is sitting there and they will notify you when you're done.
Are those the lights?
Those are the lights.
If I put my hand over it?
You may.
Okay.
We won't look.
Okay. I'm Reg Ballantyne, Senior Corporate Officer Vanguard Health Systems, which by the way just merged with Tenant, and we are now Tenant Healthcare, the second largest private hospital company in America. And as you know, we own a Brazo Healthcare, which in turn owns West Valley Hospital. I'm here simply to say thank you, Mayor, to you, to council members and the staff, for getting us as far as we got with the access to care ordinance. I mean, we just almost made it along with Mesa and Tucson, but it was just a little too late. As you know, there's things going on in Washington, which is slowing things down. I'm not going to editorialize on that one, although I could. But in any event, everything got slowed down. We may well have an opportunity sometime in the future to resurrect this, but I can't tell you just how appreciative, how grateful and thankful we are to Mayor, to you, to the members of the council. Remember, you met on a moment's notice. Winnett, we were driving her absolutely crazy, just kind of up and down, yes and no. And of course, your city manager, so this is simply thank you. You ought to feel good about it. We're here to stay. Given the merger that's occurred, I think we're going to be doing even more than we would have been doing had we not created this company. So please, thank you very, very, very much for everything you do as elected officials, and many thanks to Uncle Brian. I just say that because he's so much older than I am, but...
[laughing]
And of course, to Winnett. Winnett was absolutely a saint and an angel. So thank you very much. Brian, I'm so sorry, I didn't... No, I'm not sorry.
[laughing]
But I see the green light's still on. Do you want to continue?
[laughing]
But thank you, thank you, thank you. You were just absolutely marvelous. We probably will be back here one day to try this again. Thank you.
Well, we thank you. And I want to add, there were more than just those two people on the team that day and that night and the next day. You definitely emphasized the people that worked the number of longest hours on that, but it was one of those quick responses that you wanted with a lot of investigative process in that. But we did our best, and it sounds like that they did our, that the results were that way, except with the federal government, so...
Except with the federal government, and those of you who participated, of course, are entitled to free medical care for the rest of your lives.
Right. But you know, if it, if it comes back, the advantage of, they don't time me, don't worry.
Okay, yeah.
I better not see that red light going.
Yeah, okay.
But the, now the process, we know what the process is. We know the information now, so if it does come back, we'll be easily explained to the council, and then giving the public a little bit more time then to digest it. And so, so you know, hopefully it'll help you, it'll come back, because I know it was a real need for the hospital. So we'll just have to wait and see. But we appreciate the time you've taken tonight to come up and thank.
Yes.
They deserve all the thank yous.
They certainly do. Can I have a police escort back to our government?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, no.
You have to talk to the city manager. He runs that side of the house. I only have jurisdiction up here.
But thank you all very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to communications. And we have two items tonight. And I'm happy to say, the first item is City Manager Brian Dahlke will lead the swearing and pinning of the badge presentation to Chief Paul Louizzi. And we're very excited to see this moment happen.
Mayor and council, we are, it is an absolute pleasure to be up here before you tonight for this pinning ceremony as we get into this. And I want to say a couple of things, and we'll get Paul up here in a minute. But one of the things that we're absolutely delighted to be here tonight, was on September 23rd, that actually appointed Paul the, Paul Louizzi, the fire chief. And it's one we're very happy of, and we're very excited. He is a second police, or fire chief in the city's history. Second one in our history. So that goes back many, many years ago. So he's number two, and that doesn't mean he necessarily has to try higher, harder. But Paul, would you come up here and join me for this, this part? And I also want to look back here. I mean, if you, I'll have my back to you for just a second, I apologize, but there are a lot of people here in support of you, and it's, it's amazing to see the show of support for you. And I know we also have an assistant chief from Glendale, Chris Deschamps, where are you? Can you raise your hand? There you are.
Oh, Chris, why don't you stand just a moment, so everybody can see who you are?
So, thank you for being here as well. Absolutely. But I want to go through a little bit of Paul's background for the mayor and council, and certainly for the public that's watching, and those that are behind me. Couple of things I want to point out on Paul is, he actually joined us, he joined us in April 2007. And he was, he came here as a battalion chief initially in emergency medical services. But since then, he has actually done a couple of stints as interim fire chief. He was also the, put these on, twice as a deputy fire chief, and then he did a stint in the city manager's office. Here he is the interim deputy city manager. Paul Louizzi has over 24 years of fire and EMS experience, so very, very experienced. Nineteen years spent working for public safety organizations in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. I do know that he's a Boston Red Sox fan. That did not taint our judgment in this. But Paul's accomplished a lot in his career. Paul, you have your certified chief fire officer. Congratulations. I know that was a notable achievement for you. Certified public manager, and you went through the Arizona State University process for that. You have an MBA from our very own Franklin Pierce University, and a bachelor of science degree in public administration from Roger Williams University. So very credentialed, very experienced, and shown a tremendous amount of leadership. And it's my pleasure at this time to bring up your lovely bride. Michelle, would you join us? And children too, if they're willing?
Oh, look at that. Oh, do I have to?
And what we do as part of a pinning ceremony, it's one of those, and Michelle, we're going to ask you to actually pin the fire chief badge, Paul Louizzi, and that makes us, builds into it being official, and we'll also have a swearing in in a minute.
If he says ouch, we know she's gone too far.
So, Michelle, Emma Jacob, I know you're very proud of husband and father as well, and thank you for being here tonight, to really make this a very special part of a Congratulations. And again, it's a tribute to the leadership that you've shown this, these past, not just five months, but your tenure at the city. Very, very pleased that family experience, something you'll remember for a long time. It's, we also have an opportunity you're the fire chief, and we're excited what you've done, and where the fire department's to do the official swearing in, so we'll have the city clerk, if I may ask, city clerk going as well. I want to, also, as we present the fire chief, I want to have him say a Marine to come up here and actually swear you in, and we'll make this official.
Aye.
couple of words too. I know you have some words on your mind that you'd like to share
Aye.
State your name.
Paul Louizzi.
with us. So, please.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
I just wanted to take the opportunity just to thank the mayor and council for their
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
support during this transition, as well as obviously the city manager, Winnett and Bob
And the Constitution in laws.
And the Constitution in laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
for, for some guidance and support during that time. But also to the fire department
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
for their support during this transition. I think one of the things we realized during
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
the transition was, we are a very resilient fire department, that no matter what happens
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
to us, we'll still provide the highest level of customer service to our citizens. So I
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of fire chief.
Of fire chief.
According to the best of my ability.
wanted to thank everybody for all their help and support. Chris, for your, your help and
According to the best of my abilities.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
support and your ear that you let me bend every once in a while. To everybody in the department, really, from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate it. To my wife and kids for putting up with my crazy career for the last 20 or so many years. And also for the nutty idea that I came home with of, hey, let's move to Arizona. It obviously, it worked out for us, so thank you for all that. But thank you for the opportunity again.
Thank you, Paul. Congratulations once again. Mayor, if you have some words?
Paul, the council has asked, some of them want to comment also, so I'm going to open the floor right now to the council for their comments, and who would like to start? Councilman Stiff?
Paul, congratulations to you, the organization. I know that for as long as I've known you, which has been quite, actually quite a while, if you think about it, it's, it's great to see you achieve this moment. And, and I know the support of the folks that are physically standing behind you, but also literally there to support you. You'll, you'll have great success, so good luck. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Loretano?
I just want to congratulate you. You're going to hear this over and over again. I can't think of anyone better, a better choice for this time in our history. You will do a phenomenal job in bringing us into the future, and I look forward to all the great things. And thank you to your, to your wife and your children, because obviously, we know it's going to be a big time commitment. We appreciate everything you're giving to our city. And although Councilman Campbell's not here, I'm sure she would also extend her congratulations as well. Congratulations.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Again, congratulations. Even goes back to the time when we shared a dunk tank. Remember at that one fundraiser?
Yes.
Yes. But again, congratulations. And I, and another thing, I was, I'm really impressed and pleased with the amount of support that the actual troops have out there for you, which says a lot. And again, I appreciate them coming out and the support. And also, I guess, a quick with your new assistant, welcome aboard to Tom, and appreciate that. And I know you're going to do some great things for us as well, so thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, do I dare say congratulations, or look up in my thesaurus? Really quick, what else would be that word? So outstanding, and you know, I've been very impressed with your abilities. You've really taken the items from the things that we've really had come before you, and you quickly implemented them, as much as, and quickly as you could. And I really appreciate that. But I also appreciate the fact that I see true leadership qualities in you that are of a team. And I think for our citizens and for our city, that public safety as a team unit between fire and police is something that we all desire. And I know that you're the type of person that will have that team spirit, not only for the full public safety, but then with your men and women in your department. I know you'll do well. Thank you.
Councilman Holman?
Well, I, excuse me. Do you see what it did? It just choked me up? I just, obviously, congratulations are in order, but I want to thank you as well, because you took the challenge and you have made a better Goodyear. And that is amazing. And I want to thank the firemen that are here that supported you, because that was meaningful to us in our processes as well, Paul. But that didn't just happen. So thank you for taking the position and continuing to move us forward.
Thank you.
And lastly, I agree with what everybody has said today, but I remember when the transition took place, and I remember the stressful times. And I remember you studying the challenge that it was going to bring to you, and whether or not you were ready for that challenge. And some people questioned that for a while. But as it progressed, you showed that you were there and ready to do the job. And I think we've had conversations off and on. I have made comments to you. I thought you made extraordinary process in a very short period of time, if you really look what the assignment was, what the charge was. So congratulations, and congratulations for the fire department for recognizing that there is a leader among you, and that you're willing to work hard for this leadership, and, and for the city of Goodyear, and that you're all really dedicated, and we appreciate, appreciate each and every one of you. So Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
One more hand for Paul. We have a one second communication item tonight, and I will now read a proclamation for the 12th Annual Cities and Towns Week to be held October 20th to the 26th, 2013. And since we didn't have anybody coming before, that's my job to read it tonight. So. Arizona Cities and Towns Week, October 20th to 26th, 2013, whereas the citizens of Goodyear rely on the city to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response, to ensure safe communities, and whereas the cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and program that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational program. And whereas it is important for Goodyear to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community, and whereas the responsibility of the city officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communications with citizens using various avenue and means. And whereas through participation and cooperations, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal, excuse me, municipal staff can work together to ensure the services provided by Goodyear can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life for our community. Now therefore, be it resolved, that I, Georgia Lord Mayor of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim October 20th to the 26th, 2013, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week in the city of Goodyear, and join with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in recognizing the services cities and towns provide, as well as honor those elected officials, staff, and volunteers who serve in municipal government, given under my hand in these free United States and the city of Goodyear on the 7th day of October 2013, and to which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed, and have made this proclamation public. I'm not sure who I give this proclamation to, so I'll just leave it up here. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.2 by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting held on September 9th, 2013, and a special meeting held on September 16th, 2013. Item 6.2, accept the dedication of a special warranty deed for sewer lift station site and three exclusive sewer line easements associated with the La Spriessus development.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Gee, most of the public's gone now, huh? Okay. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Great. With that then, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stiff, and a second by Councilman Loretano. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass the six zero.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the business section. We will now consider adopting Resolution 13-1575, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with the Tohono O'odham Nation for grant funds for the purchase of two Segways for Goodyear Police Department. Chief Geyer to present. Chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And tonight, we have some great news to share with you.
Thank you.
About our newest community policing opportunity. Each year, the Tohono O'odham Nation donates 12% of their proceeds or revenues by the way of grants to public safety agencies. This year, we're pleased to announce that the Goodyear Police Department has been awarded $16,000 to purchase two new Segway vehicles. The best thing about this grant is, it requires no match. The only cost will be the routine maintenance and upkeep of the Segways. And I got to tell you that I had the opportunity to get a loaner Segway, and it was my intent to bring it here tonight, to zip down the aisle, to come up here, do a little 360, and then present to you. But after thinking about it, I didn't want to be known for the rest of my career as the chief who had a mishap in front of council. So I, so I thought better. Just a few facts about the Segways. We're going to assign them to the community policing unit. The two Eric's will use them primarily. And I can tell you, they are a magnet. They, they attract people. People will come up, they will want to talk, they will want to ask, ask questions about the Segways. And it's just a great community policing tool. On the right-hand side of, of the screen, you can see, this is the X2 Patrol러 model. That's the one we're getting. And they actually make several police models of the Segways these days. Ours will be similar to that one, except where the yellow is, we will have black and white. We will have the Goodyear logo. Ours will be equipped with some saddlebags over top of the wheels, and we'll have the Goodyear logo, Goodyear Police Department logo, and city of Goodyear logo on there. They're pretty ruggedized. This is an intermediate model. There's a more street model, and then there's a more ruggedized model. So this is right in the middle. And when you become proficient on these Segways, you can go over rocks, you can go through sand. If you're really good, you can go downstairs. So there's a bunch of different things we can do with them. They have a maximum speed of 12 and a half miles an hour, which on a Segway is pretty fast. And they go 25 miles on electrical charge, and that equates to about 20 cents of electricity being used. So they're very efficient. And they've become very popular in the law enforcement agencies across the country. There's about 1,500 at different agencies actually throughout the world and across the United States. The benefits to the police department, there's a visibility factor, and they helped project a stronger police presence. You know, they're a great tool, because when you're standing on one, you're about eight inches taller. So for most of that, for most of us, that puts us way up above the cars when you're going through parking lots, when you're at the ballpark. You know, you have great visibility. You can patrol about three times faster and respond about three times faster than you can on foot. So again, at the mall, when it comes, parking lots, that'll be a great tool for us. And as we talked about, it increases the interaction between the community and our police department. They're very efficient. And they're tactical, because they're quiet. You can patrol parking lots, and you can pull up on people doing things they're not supposed to do. And you know, just, just you have that, that quiet aspect to them. And our Segways, again, they'll be involved in, or they will be present at all our different events, the ballpark events, spring training games. They may be seen at schools or at parks, depending on the events that are going on. Parades, both the Tale of Two Cities, Pebble Creek Veterans Day parades, the Gain Event, our 4th of July events, Special Olympics events. And the best thing, when the mall opens, we'll have a great tool to patrol both inside and outside of the mall. So we're very excited for another tool to improve our community relations. And is there any questions from council?
Thank you for the presentation. Before we get to the council, could I have, let's see, if there's anybody from the audience that wish to make any comment on this? Can I do that now?
I have no speaker cards.
You have no speaker cards. Okay. So let's hear a motion first, please, and a second.
Mayor, I need to read the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would the city clerk please read the resolution? Thank you.
Adopt.
I lost my way.
Adopt Resolution 13-1575, authorizing the city to enter into agreement 14-2723 with the Tohono O'odham Nation for $16,000 in grant funds for the purchase of two Segways for the Goodyear Police Department.
Could I have a motion a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I think I heard a motion from Councilman Loretano, and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
I was just gonna say, it's, it's a great idea. I vaguely remember seeing something about these in the malls, but that's, that's another issue we can talk about on another day there, Chief.
That was a movie.
Yeah, it was a movie.
Oh, well.
But anyway, I, I think these things will be great. You get more coverage. So again, Winnett's not costing us anything, right? No matching grants.
Right.
So that's even better.
I can be assure you that it won't be copied from that movie. Any other comments?
You know, congratulations, because really, even we joke about it and kind of giggle, and yes, it's not the Mounties, and I suppose they're not as messy as horses. So that's a good thing. But you know what? These are tools in our toolbox, and we need everything we can to be out there and visible. So I think it's great. Good job.
Councilman Loretano?
I, I think it's a great idea. You guys are thinking outside the box, and I'm not going to say anything about Mall Cop over there. I, over at Westgate, I've seen them out there patrolling, and they do move. They've actually, they'll got a little sun, I don't know if you're getting the sunshade attachment.
Oh, goodness.
But they, they actually move, and they can get through those parking lots. So all kidding aside, this is actually something, I, I don't think people realize how fast these things can move out from one area to the other.
Well, I, any other comments? Yes. Councilman Stip?
Just a, I'm resisting everything I can when you talk about making people taller in that thing. For those of you know, that know the two Eric's.
[laughing]
It would only be better if he was here tonight.
Out of order.
Yeah. However, I do obviously appreciate the police department looking at it, and I know that through our grants coordinator, that was, you know, a joint effort to get, to get that done as well. And I think it just shows us the importance of being able to seek and write and get these opportunities that we normally wouldn't fund ourselves. So, you know, hats off obviously to the police department, but to everybody in the city manager's office and on the staff. Thanks.
Well, we're progressing. There's so many cities that have this. And I've seen some of the reports, and I've seen some of the actual showing even on television, and as, you know, indoor malls as well. And that may be us very soon. So I think it's going to...
These are tools in our toolbox, and we need everything we can to be out there and visible. So I think it's great. Good job.
Councilman Laura Tano?
I think it's a great idea. You guys are thinking outside the box, and I'm not gonna say anything about Mall Cop over there.[508.62][508.62](laughter) Over at Westgate, I've seen them out there patrolling, and they do move. They've actually, they've got a little sun, I don't know if you're getting the sun shade attachment.
Oh, goodness.[518.22][518.22](laughter)
But they actually move, and they can get through those parking lots. So all kidding aside, this is actually something, I don't think people realize how fast these things can move out from one area to the other.
Well, any other comments? Yes. Councilman Stip?
Just a, I'm resisting everything I can when you talk about making people taller in that thing.[538.35][538.35](laughter) For those of you that know the two Eric's.[541.16][541.16](laughter) It would only be better if he was here tonight.
Out of order.[547.54][547.54](laughter)
However, I do obviously appreciate the police department looking at it, and I know that through our grants coordinator, that was, you know, a joint effort to get that done as well. And I think it just shows us the importance of being able to seek and write and get these opportunities that we normally wouldn't fund ourselves. So, you know, hats off, obviously, to the police department, but to everybody in the city manager's office and on the staff. Thanks.
Well, we're progressing. There's so many cities that have this, and I've seen some of the reports, and I've seen some of the actual showing even on television, and, you know, indoor malls as well, and that may be us very soon. So I think it's going to help the citizens, and you'll be able to get to the problem quicker, in a safe manner. So I just think it certainly saves the city money by having that type of transportation. So I think it's very creative and inventive, and thank you for going in that direction. So where am I? Open for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pass a 6-0.
Okay, let's go to 7.2. It's to consider approving an amendment on the comprehensive sign package for the Palm Valley Medical Campus to allow for an addition of the hospital identification icon sign to the south elevation of the West Valley Hospital. Joe Schmidt, planning manager, to present.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a proposed amendment to the comprehensive sign package for the West Valley Medical Campus, and it's to allow a hospital identification icon on the south tower of the hospital building facing Interstate 10. You all, I believe, all know where the hospital's located, so you don't, I won't go through that description of the aerial photograph. A comprehensive sign package was approved for the medical campus in 2006, which basically was a plan for revising and updating the existing signs on the campus and providing additional signs. It has been partially implemented with the installation of the entry sign at 136th Drive and McDowell, and various campus directional signs, but has not been fully implemented yet. is to allow this, a new sign type called a hospital identification icon. And the proposed additional sign would look similar to the general service sign that you see along the highway to help people find hospitals. It has a blue background with the white letter H in the center. This particular sign would be about 14 feet high and about the same in width, not to exceed 200 square feet. It will have a stretched fabric face and will be internally illuminated. The plan is to install it on the south tower facing I-10, where it can be visible from the freeway, and it would be mounted just below the hospital name and logo, which is here, approximately here on the tower right now. The applicable pages that are affected by the proposed amendment to the comprehensive sign package are included in your staff report and agenda material, and it basically, they just describe the additional sign and reflect where it will be located. The zoning ordinance typically limits the size of wall signs to more than 200 square feet. However, the standard can be modified through the amendment of the comprehensive sign package, which is what we're doing tonight. Staff notes that although the hospital has exposure to I-10, it's more than 1,200 feet away from the freeway, and it does not own the adjacent property. Therefore, freeway pylon sign was not a viable option. Given the importance of the hospital and the medical campus to the community and the emergency services it provides, we feel the proposed addition of a hospital identification icon will further the city's quality of life goals and provide enhanced visibility for the facility. This request was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its September 18th meeting, and was unanimously recommended for approval. Staff likewise recommends approval of the comprehensive sign package amendment as proposed, subject to the stipulations in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Are there any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak on this issue? Okay, then let's ask for a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Holman, a second by Councilman, why can't I remember your name anymore? Joanne Osborne? I don't, you belong on this side. Every time I look at you, I think, okay. All right. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
I don't remember, Joe, but hidden either direction, are there any of those signs that says next exit, hospital, or anything like that? Do you know, on I-10?
On the freeway?
On I-10?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I thought that, can somebody on the staff know that? Because I think there is one, and that I, so.
I don't recall, yeah.
It'd be nice if it matched.
I'd rather have a very, well, it's not illuminated like this is going to be.
No, no, the blue.
Yeah.
It's the same.
Mayor, council members, there actually is one at Litchfield, right at the exit there, about 200 feet down the ramp.
And it's in blue.
But it's, yeah, it's fairly far down the ramp, so it may not be all that useful when you're in an emergency situation.
The only thing, I think, the sign would be very helpful, you know, I mean, if you're looking for the hospital, but probably just as helpful if you're on the highway and you're looking for the hospital, you actually see where the ramp is to get off, because even if you see it, you're still trying to figure out, you know, probably how to get there. So, and I don't recall them on there all the time, but I don't ever recall seeing, you know, one actually on 10, because a lot of times you'll see those signs, next exit, you know, you know, food, lodging, you know, that kind of stuff.
Councilman Holman?
I was gonna say, the sign is there.
It is?
Yes, it is there.
Okay.
Councilman Stip?
This is only being proposed to be on the south side of this building, though, correct?
Correct.
I was trying to drive and see, you know, I was keep my eyes on the road on the way down, but would it, is there a reason that this isn't gonna at least hit two sides of that tower, so if you're actually looking for, I mean, if the whole point is to bring visibility to the facility, why are we just talking about the I-10 side? Do we know?
That was the request of the applicant to just do the freeway frontage.
Okay. Does anybody know, is that tower visible from the west?
It is, yes, it is. And they have a little sign up there now. That's not visible, but it's very visible. I've gone by there several times, because we've had this discussion before, and it is. I mean, my feelings added to it could be a digital sign on the side street on McDowell.
So.
That's where I think going into the emergency part, that's what I'd like to see someday, because that's not, that doesn't catch your eye at all.
Right.
For emergency, so.
No, I agree, and I think that's kind of where I'm starting to drive, is this is such a beautiful facility from the road, it looks like a great hotel, and that's a compliment to the hospital itself, and I can definitely see where this would be a benefit, particularly from I-10, and I can also see where the additional signage would be of benefit if we're trying to identify it as the hospital. Is there something in this that would prevent us from at least approving it tonight, should they choose to add another sign, that we don't have to come back and do this all over again?
But where are you saying, the sign, and I mean, the location, and certainly from the applicant?
I'm throwing it to, I'm looking at staff going, is this, can we open the door? Do we not have to do this again?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Stip, we do have the applicant, actually, the CEO of the hospital staying home here, so he can certainly address council as far as the timing on this one, the importance of getting this one through, and yes, we can always amend after this as well, but it might be important, I think, to hear from the applicant as well, just to add a little bit more to that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make, I'm trying to open the door, so we don't have to come back for yet another amendment to the sign ordinance, if we do it all in one fell swoop, and then later on, we can get it done.
Mayor, councilman, thank you for giving us this opportunity to come forward today. We really wanted to focus on the simplicity of the first sign being the one, obviously, facing I-10. When you are entering and exiting off of Litchfield or Dyart, you do have the road signage that you're seeing there that'll direct you towards the hospital, but it really was for the broad stroke we were looking for across I-10, as you described earlier with, obviously, the presentation you've already heard. We would very, we would welcome the opportunity to look at the west side of that same tower in this proposal, if you're interested in that. That's just one of the things that we didn't want to complicate it at this time and juncture, and that the future would look for us to expand signage and additional components as we grow as an organization. Many of you know, we're in a $26 million expansion right now, and then as we move from a community hospital and to becoming advanced in trauma program, that that need is going to advance, but for tonight, if you're interested in looking at the west side in addition to the south side of that same tower, we'd welcome that as an opportunity.
I'm trying to simplify the process so we don't have to do this again. So I've looked to staff to say, can we do it? If not...
We're, Councilmember Stip, we're actually looking at that right now to see if that can be added due to the noticing requirements.
Oh, okay. And by the time I read it this weekend, it was too...
Councilman Laura Tano?
I just want to agree with what was said. I think, I also agree with what the mayor was saving, if you do come back with another one, because we had the necessity a couple weeks ago to actually use your emergency room, and when you're in a stressful situation, even if you know where that hospital is, you're not thinking of which exit is it. And so I think this is great, and any additional signings, obviously, we can't do it today. I understand the need, and I think we do want the public to know where the hospital is. That's kind of one of the most important things, and you need to know where your community is, the hospital, the fire station, the police station.
Mayor, council, there's no notice requirement that would get in the way if they want to add a stipulation to include the signage on the west side of the tower and just have them resubmit a revised document within 30 days after action.
So can Bill revise his motion?
I didn't make the original motion, but I can make an amendment, and then we can vote on the amendment, right?
Well, then let's go to the person that made the original motion with the, can we do it that? Is that all we have to do?
Go ahead and, yes, if you could amend the motion.
Okay, so I'd like to make an amendment to the original motion to add the capacity for a west, westerly facing sign to match the southerly facing sign. There we go.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Then we've had our council discussion on this already, so I think we can do it that way. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Mayor, you still need to vote on the main motion?
You voted on the amendment.
Oh, we voted on the amendment.
Okay, all right, so let's open, let's vote on the main motion.
Voice vote?
Yes, yes, you can do a voice vote.
But I don't need a motion and a second?
You already did one motion, the main motion, and then you amended the motion?
Uh-huh.
So you need one more vote on the main motion.
All right. So all in favor of the main motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, let's go to 7.3. To consider adopting Resolution 13-1564, approving an amended and restated development agreement for Las Palmas. Joe Schmidt, to present.
Mayor, council, once again, this is the proposed amended and restated development agreement for Las Palmas, which is to replace the original development agreement and two amendments that were approved previously for this project. Las Palmas is one of the 16 properties that participated in the West Goodyear MOU in 2005, and we've recently done similar amended and restated development agreements for, earlier this year, for Amber Meadows, La Jolla Vista, and Prodera. Las Palmas is a residential project situated on 273 acres east of Perryville Road, south of Roosevelt, west of Citrus, and north of Van Buren Street. The property has preliminary plat approval for 470 single-family lots, ranging in size from 6,000 to 20,000 square feet, and up to 280 court homes on about 47 acres of the The original development agreements executed pursuant to the MOU provided that the property owners would prepay certain development fees, so the city would have the funds available to construct infrastructure to serve the western portion of Goodyear, generally located between Cotton Lane and Perryville and between I-10 and MC85. Almost all 16 properties obtained entitlements, and many received plat approval to varying degrees until the national economy crashed in 2008, at which time the property owners could not afford to make the prepayments required under the development agreements, and development basically came to a standstill. Last December, staff determined that projected growth in this area could be supported by existing infrastructure until new development occurs and pays the development impact fees at the time of development. The revised development agreement no longer requires prepayment of development fees, but still requires the development to move forward toward construction or otherwise lose its previously approved plating. This particular agreement, the applicant is required to record a final plat by July 31st of 2014, and the final plat would be subject to the new recording deadlines and requirements that after approval, construction commence within 180 days. The owners are still required to participate in installing regional sewer lines, and under the existing cost recovery resolution, which was adopted for the West Goodyear area, and which is expected to be modified and updated in the upcoming months, prior to recording a final plat, Las Palmas will be required to pay over $1.7 million as its proportionate share of sewer lines that have already been installed, and will be responsible for installing another mile and a half of sewer lines to reach its boundaries. This project will not participate in the water infrastructure because it does not lie within the city's service territory, and it will be served by Arizona Water Company. The amended, restated development agreement also still requires the owners to dedicate right-of-way and construct certain roadway improvements on adjoining streets, and further clarifies that these improvements may not be subject to cost recovery reimbursements or development impact fee credits. In summary, the proposed amended and restated agreement for Las Palmas is consistent with the revised framework for promoting development in West Goodyear, previously discussed with the mayor and council, and as reflected in the revised development agreements recently executed with the other MOU participants. Relieving the owners of the prepayment obligations will allow development to move forward and promote the installation of regional infrastructure to serve this area. So staff is recommending approval of Resolution 13-1564, approving the amended and restated development agreement for Las Palmas.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read the resolution by title only?
Adopt Resolution 13-1564, approving and authorizing and directing execution of an amended and restated development agreement regarding development of an approximate 273-acre parcel generally located east of Perryville Road, west of Citrus Road, south of Roosevelt Road, and north of Van Buren Street, Las Palmas, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and agreement, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, a second, please?
So moved.
A motion from Councilman Stiff, a second.
Second.
From Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
When we, not that long ago, extended one of these west development agreements, were they asked to extend it at that time, this particular group?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Pizzillo, to give you a little background, we executed development agreements with basically almost all of 16 properties. Over time, some of them expired. Then a group of about five or six came together and wanted to extend the agreements past the expiration date. In December of 2011 is when we entered into an amendment to those agreements and said, yes, we'll extend your agreements for two years, while they would do some update studies on the water and sewer utility systems. This group, which this property was one of those participants, have done that, and we are using the new studies now to revise the cost recovery resolution for the West Goodyear area, and like I said in my presentation, that'll be forthcoming in the upcoming months.
Now, they already have a preliminary plat, right?
That's correct.
And they have to submit the final by?
July 31st of 2014.
And what happens, you say, within 100, how many days was it they have to start building?
Well, first, if they don't submit the plat by July 4, record the plat by July 14th, 2014, the preliminary plat automatically expires.
Okay.
If they do record the plat, they still have to commence construction within 180 days.
If that doesn't happen, it also expires?
Then we revoke the approval of the final plat.
Okay. Question probably for the fire chief is, on this particular plat, can we, I'll wait to get some. Can we service this area with our current infrastructure without a degradation to the system?
You know, I think initially, yes. The answer is yes. We're gonna have to look at the call volume and also the response times to that area over time, and continue to kind of manage that, to kind of look for our growth indicators down there.
See, my concern is, and again, I've shared with the mayor before, is infill is always my preference in outfield, and that's okay if they're going there, but my concern is also, is it gonna put extra pressure on us building facilities that we may not have the money for? Because it's not just building the facilities, then we're looking at, you know, operation as well. So to me, it's very important that we can service as of what we have right now in the system.
Yes, yeah, I, yes, we can service it at this time. Again, we'll have to continue to kind of look at how it impacts those stations over time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sure the signal will be is how many home sites are sold and houses are built at one point. So do we have a number? Do we know that at this point out of the number of homes that will signal that?
Mayor, I don't think we have a specific number of homes. As the fire chief said, it would depend on the call volumes.
Okay.
I would point out that this, at its farthest, this is probably one of the developments that's farthest from an existing station, but it's still at 3.5 miles. But it's within a half mile of a future station site that we have on Citrus at Harrison.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, just real quick, because one of the initials was to throw some money towards the fire station, if I'm not mistaken. And the reason being is, we don't need that right now for coverage. And I just want to make sure that we're not going out too far, which is forcing our hands on building things that we don't have the money for.
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Pizzillo, I understand the concern. And I think what the idea is that based on the growth projections that we've made, we feel like the existing infrastructure can handle the rate of growth. Now, if that increases, then that may put more demand on the system, which is obviously your concern. But at the same time, that would be more, mean that there's more money flowing in because you're getting increased in activity. So I think that's been kind of factored in.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Stiff?
Everybody, while we're on that note, how many total dwelling units is this? So I'm seeing some pretty tightly packed neighborhoods, and then we've got court homes on top of it.
It's a maximum of 750, Councilman Stiff.
And do we have a, is this in the seven-minute response area? Is this in an eight-minute response area? This is pretty far out from Station 184, which is at Cervel and Yuma.
Correct. I have not looked at this particular development within the response guidelines under FireView yet. I can get that information for you to where it sits.
Do we have, will that impact final plat decisions? So we can move forward with this and decide what we want to do with final plat? Is that correct?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stiff, obviously that's something that'll be evaluated at the time. But the commitments that are being made is that the development will be able to move forward with the development agreement as it's currently structured.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I think that that's been the concern that I've been raising all along, and I realize we're kind of in a catch-22 situation here with regard to that. But I think that if, between what we have already approved, what is coming forward, and now this, that fire station at Harrison and Citrus is going to become, is going to come sooner rather than later. And that is a one and a half million dollar a year new revenue or new expenditure that I don't know that this council has contemplated.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
No, I would just say at the final plat, and again, maybe one of the stipulations may be what the response time is so that whoever's buying out there realizes that it may be a while to get some of those response times that Councilmember Stiff's referring to, if that money's not available. What I don't want to see happen is, as we start to go outside of the limits and it starts to grow, that the pressure to get into that four-minute, five-minute response time, you know, we don't have the money, that it gets built just because, you know. Because, as you know, residential doesn't generate the money. It's, everything follows the residential, which the retail, which follows rooftops, which is always that lagging period. So again, I have some of the concerns with Stiff as we move out. I just want to make sure that, you know, we can do that with our existing service levels, at least for a while until things start picking back up and we have the money to do, you know, some of these expansions.
I guess that's a good reason for the developer to sell sprinklers in the homes, right? I know there, you can do the possibility of putting in requirements that they inform the public of how many minutes by buying in this community it's going to take for the response from the fire department. That would be responsible on our part to give them that information until a fire department is built. So they're, they have that information upfront and they can make a decision whether they want to have sprinklers. So I don't know if that's possible or if the builder would accept that as one of it, but it's just a suggestion. That way, we're telling the public, you know, exactly what the situation is at the time. So I don't know if that's possible, but I throw that out.
Mayor, council members, likely we would ask that the builder have information onsite that is given in every contract that would stipulate these sorts of conditions onsite. And so rather than add it as a specific stipulation of the plat, have it as information onsite that's required to be given in every contract.
And the other thing we did at one point when we were trying to get builders to do more sprinklers, we actually asked them to put brochures in the model home and maybe even a demonstration part of what a sprinkler looks like, a picture of it or whatever. So it sort of promotes that. So it does give them an option.
Staff will explore that with this builder and others in the West Goodyear area certainly and report back to council.
Great.
Mayor?
Yes?
It's not just about the fire, it's actually less about the fire protection than it is about the EMS and all the rest of it. So I don't want to put a negative connotation that this is a push for sprinklers while I obviously support that. It's about, it's about the entire response package. So I think having that discussion, and I'll be curious to get the information from the fire chief and put it all together when we see it again.
Okay, all right, thank you. All comments, comments finished? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passed a 6-0.
Thank you very much. Well, now's the time for comments from the council, activities. Who would like to start first? Nobody's been, any place?
I'll start.
Yes, good.
I just wanted to say that I've had a couple of great opportunities this past week. One was the meeting we had today and the mayor and Joanne were there, as well as Vice Mayor Pizzillo. And that was a community summit on some serious West Valley issues, which incorporated the leadership from several of our surrounding communities as well as ourselves. And it looks like a good start. Three issues were identified, child crisis, homeless, and transportation, which is of course been a longstanding issue and one that we need to address. So that was very exciting. And the other was the Arizona Town Hall, the results of their last town hall. After they have one, they hold small meetings around the valley, or around the state, rather, to further disseminate and get further comments. And the issue right now that they dealt with in their last town hall was higher education. And that was an exciting discussion, and I encourage anyone to participate in the town hall. It's absolutely everybody on an even playing field to address topical issues. And so it's a very rewarding and interesting experience.
Great.
I attended a few things, but actually, one that was a great deal of fun and just an honor to be there was a, I went to TGEN and had a nice show and tell and was able to be in the heart of the labs and see how our biomedical researchers are really working. It's really wonderful to have in our, in our state. Another item that I attended was the Restoration Investment Strategies for Arizona's Forests and Watersheds. And since I'm your token environmental angel on the council, I figured, you know, I would like to know a little bit about this. And actually Senator Kyle was one of the keynote speakers. The discussion was around the history of a world that was made to burn and how do we work with nature and the concern and policy and pluralism of procedure. Without thinning of the trees, we have two major issues. And when you think about the trees, how thick our forests are these days, you know, all those trees are like straws within our watersheds. And if we have too many, that's one issue. And then when we have so many and then we have all these forest fires, then we have all of that ash that gets into our watersheds. And a couple of statistics that were really quite eye-opening was that 20%, 21% of the valley's water is from these watersheds. And 25% of our forests, from Flagstaff to Sholo, has burned. And so that just really, you know, the discussion was about how do we combat some of this issue and go in within thinning of our forests? And how do we do this, of course, without relying on our federal government, which is, you know, another issue altogether. And one of the nice little quotes that President Roosevelt had said once was that "Our forests are the lungs of our land." And I just thought that was worthy of, yes, of saying again. And so, you know, that was really interesting and, you know, obviously my son being a farm, and of course, I found it interesting for that, too. But, you know, it was just something that I wanted to share with you because those kind of issues do trickle down to our city and everything that we deal with.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
This weekend, got to do a few enjoyable and things. Number one, got to kick off the Relay for Life over at the ballpark. It was nice to see all those people give their time to fight this ugly disease called cancer. Also was able to pick out the mayor's trophy at the car show at the ballpark covering for you. You would have loved the car I picked out. It was really nice.
I appreciate it.
And last but not least, on the weekend, we were, a lot of us were there for the Palmetier rededication. It was nice to see the turnout of the neighborhood and the number of kids that were using all the new park equipment. Fantastic. Staff put on a great, you know, set all that up. It was really fantastic. So that's kind of it.
Sherri?
Well, I attended the park dedication and that was wonderful. And then the week before, I stopped in on the Arts and Culture Retreat. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who attended that. They had a good turnout. And I think they're coming up with a lot of good plans for our city as we move forward.
Yes, they are.
And just briefly, I'll remind everyone that October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month and Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. Councilman Stiff?
Thank you, Sherri. I also attended the Palmetier Park. That was, that was great to see the neighborhood come out. I know that there was some concern about whether, how it was going to be attended. And to see the community really come out was amazing. I, council, or Vice Mayor and I also kicked off the Arts and Culture Strategic Planning Meeting. It was, it was great, great to see everybody. The one thing that we talked about with that group was asking them to bring us some preliminary information before our retreat in case there's arts and culture influence that we need to make decisions on. So Nathan said he'd do his best to try to at least get a couple of bullet points in there. And that was, that was pretty neat. I also had the opportunity, which is very unusual for me, to get out and speak to a small group of residents in Estrella, invited up there to speak to one of the clubs. And I thought for sure I'd only spend about a half hour going over some city stuff, and an hour and 15 minutes later, they're like, all right, you need to shut up and move on. So that was, that was a great experience. That was the day after we all attended the Estrella Mountain Ranch Homeowners Association, the annual meeting. And like I said, we all were there. We also had the privilege of seeing the governor in our city this week. And most importantly, I had a Arizona Municipal Water Users Association Board Meeting last week. Just a couple of things for the rest of the council. One is, there's been a lot of discussion in the last six months or so about the Navajo Generating Power Station. There are currently, right now, two proposals to fix the quote-unquote "problem" there. And that was, that was really good news to hear. And that has a direct impact on all of us as far as our CAP water rates, et cetera. So it's good to see that we're actually getting some movement on that. And then one of the things that I think is little known is our executive director, Kathy Ferris, is actually co-chair of the Colorado River Basin Working Group.
Very important.
Yeah, very important. And she testified before the Senate over the summer and was then appointed as co-chair. So Arizona's water needs and the biggest water users here in the valley are being very well represented by our executive director. So that's good news for us as she moves forward. So we'll look for some updates on that.
Great. Well, first of all, I want to thank council for attending these events. There's only so many things you can work in a week. And so, Vice Mayor, thank you for taking some of the other. And the confidence, I feel, when I can't make some of these events, I know that you're going to attend them and come back with the information we need. So really, I can't thank you enough. I attended some of the very same things that you did this week, but I do want to mention Kids at Hope Art Walk at the Avondale Elementary School District. Vice Mayor and I were there to that one. And that where students have been busy taking photos in order to give us a better understanding of Kids at Hope by being able to name it and picture it. And so we went there to view the photos. And it was nice. Some of the young artists wanted their pictures taken with us and they were very proud of their product. So it's very worthwhile when you see the development. Because, you know, sometimes young students are looking for other things than sports, you know, and trying to discover themselves. And if you looked at the photos, some of them are really deep in thought. I mean, went into deciding what they were going to photograph was pretty extraordinary. So it was kind of one of those that you think, well, why should I go to something like that? It was really worthwhile. Comes around next year, I really recommend that you go to it. Yeah, I spoke at the Leadership West Class 20 on a mayor's panel. And of course, we have one councilman in that this year, Councilman Campbell. And so I was appreciative of that. Again, the governor came and we were there to greet her and talk to her. Gave us a great opportunity. And at the ballpark dedication. And today, I was a guest at an event at Pebble Creek, and I just want to bring it to your attention how neat it is. It was an LPGA event. And I don't know if you realize it, but we have a champion that lives in Pebble Creek. And each year, she gives this for scholarship to young people who are, young women who are interested in golf and being professionals. And today, they had 35 professionals there from the LPGA. And it was a wonderful event. And just to give you a little information, we have in our city Marilyn Smith, who was a former, was born in 1929, and she's a former American professional golfer. She was one of the 13 founders, the founders of the LPGA in 1950. And some of you weren't of that age in the 50s, but let me tell you, in order to accomplish this, I lived in that era, accomplish something like this as a woman was a great feat. She won two major championships, 21 LPGA tour events and all, and she is a member of the World Golf Hall of Fame. And what they did is they had, the guest speaker this year was the new inductee, Hollis Stacy to that organization. So she spoke and it was, gave some of the memories that she had of Marilyn Smith and how she helped her. Smith turned pro in 1949 and joined the Spaulding staff. She was one of 13 women who founded the LPGA in 1950, and she won the first tournament in 1952 at Fort Wayne Open. She would go on to win a total of 21 events on the LPGA Tour, including two major championships, the 1963, the 1964 Title Owners Championship. She finished in the top 10 on the money line list of nine times between 1961 and '72, with their best finishes being fourth place in '63, '68, and '70. She was named the LPGA Most Improved Player in '63, and she was the LPGA's president from 1958 to 1960. She was selected for membership of the World Golf Hall of Fame in the Lifetime Achievement category in 2006 and was inducted in October 2006. She became the first woman to work on the men's golf television broadcast. And that was in 1973. So, you know, it isn't that I'm neglecting you men, but you know, golf has always had a man's name attached to it. And I thought it was pretty extraordinary. And to think, she lives in our community. And so congratulations to her. So thank you for allowing me the time to talk about here. So, city manager, your, your time.
Mayor and council, I actually do not have updates and manager summary, other than there was a comment by Councilmember Stiff on bullet points for coming out of the Arts Commission Retreat. But also as a, just to keep council informed... But also as a, just to keep council informed, there are several work sessions that we have that are going on this month that will really be leading up towards a council retreat November first and second. So it's going to be very busy the next several Monday nights as we gear up for that because that will give you the foundation, we think, that will help you set policy. So we have a lot of moving parts, everything from arts to parks to transportation to general plan, to the retail study, to what we're doing on the Strategic Action Plan. So some of those studies are still in process. They'll be finished up largely in January, which of course, won't be done in time for the retreat. So some of that will be coming to council after the retreat as well, but we'll get you what, what we can in advance of that.
Well, it's a busy time. Do you have any inquiries of staff before we? Okay. The next meeting will be a work session on October fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen at five P.M. And then actually, we'll have two work sessions following that, on the twenty-first of October and the twenty-eighth and the regular meeting on the twenty-eighth. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.